To the Recreation Commission meeting today, Tuesday, July 23. And you can check us out on our live telecast on Comcast Channel 27, Estadio 26, AT&amp;T U-99, and on our website, dailycity.org/meetings. For those wishing to address the Recreation Commission on any item on the agenda or under public appearances and oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance to the City Council chambers and submit to staff members early in the meeting as possible. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the Department of Library and Recreation Services as soon as possible prior to the meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we can start with the pledge to the flag.
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its republic, with all its standards, for a nation, unindistinct, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up is our roll call.
Commissioner Nathaniel Nate Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Jack Pastor.
Here.
Commissioner Nadia Flamenco.
Here.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair, Luis Olandos, who's not here, and Chair Christina Luna.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
And next up, I'd like to put in a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to enter a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I second that.
And, motion approved. And next up, I'd like a motion to approve June 25, the minutes for June 25, 25's meeting. Can I get a motion?
A motion.
Second?
Yep, I second.
Great. And moving on, we have a Director's Report.
Good evening, Chair Luna and members of the Commission. We have one item this evening, and that is the Red Cross Emergency Shelter Agreements. And by way of history, the city of Daly City has had a longstanding relationship with the Red Cross. The Red Cross locally is based in Burlingame. You may have passed their offices on, I want to say Floribund, it's not Floridusdale. And the Red Cross is a pretty amazing organization. It's an army of volunteers, so, including the people we've been dealing with here locally. And those of you who were watching the news down in Los Angeles, week before last, the 7.1 earthquake is certainly a wake-up call for the need to be prepared always for natural disasters and other types of emergencies. And it's the widespread big emergencies that really become critical for cities and the Red Cross to partner. If we're talking about a 7.0 or greater earthquake in the Bay Area, there's a very good chance that people will be left without homes, and the question is, where do they go? And ideally, the Red Cross steps in and would like to keep folks as close to their homes as possible. And that means opening up emergency shelters in the cities where people live. In Daly City, there's three specific sites that the Red Shelter has had on their inventory of possible shelters, and those are the Bay Shore Community Center, the War Memorial Community Center, and Pacelli Events Center/Dolger Center. So periodically, what happens is someone from the Red Cross will come out and meet with our staff, and they do a very thorough inventory of the spaces. And they started out at Bay Shore, and then next went to War Memorial, and final, their final stop was at Pacelli Gym and Dolger Senior Center. Things they're looking for are square footage. How many people could we fit in this space in the event of a shelter, in a disaster where we need to shelter folks? What facilities are nearby? They count toilets, they count urinals. Another requirement, they really look for, I mean, if you're talking about housing people over the course of several days, they really like to have showers accessible to the folks that would be staying there. And in our facilities, they really like that our facilities, we have kitchens. There's a very nice kitchen at the Bay Shore Community Center, as well as the Pacelli Gym. And they were really intrigued about having a separate dining area, which they could possibly do at Westlake Park. If folks were sheltered in the gym there at Pacelli Gym, they could prepare meals at the kitchen in the Dolger Senior Center, at the cafe there. They really liked that. All of our facilities do have some form of showers. They're typically not used or made available to the public. I think we'd have to do some scrambling to make them accessible. They are functional, they're just, in some cases, have been converted to storage space. But we have three facilities that they want to continue keeping on their inventory. And in order to accomplish that, they are seeking a facility use agreement, and I don't know if I gave that to you in the packet of information. So I was hoping, the action we're looking forward tonight is to bring this forward to the City Council and ultimately authorize the City Manager to enter the agreement with the Red Cross to, in the event of a widespread disaster or emergency, allow the Red Cross to partner with us to use the Bay Shore Community Center, War Memorial Community Center, or Pacelli Events Center in the event they needed space to temporarily house displaced families in Daly City. As I mentioned to you, this, we've had agreements going way, way back. I started in 1996, and one of the first things we did then was meet with the Red Cross and updated the plans. They would have separate agreements with schools. Some of the school sites would make very good shelters too, those with gyms and shower facilities. But right now, we're just concerned with the agreement as it affects our facilities. So if there's any questions about the agreement, it's pretty straightforward. Nothing overly burdensome on the city, really. It was just, it will be in their array of tools to use when they respond to a disaster.
I do have a, well, it's not a, it's not a question, it's a suggestion. I'm from El Salvador, and I survived three earthquakes, from 8.5 to, from 7.1 up. So another facility that is good in case of an earthquake, it can be where the pool is, because it's a big land, and it's plain. And sometimes, when it's an earthquake higher than 7.1, you will see buildings getting destroyed, and even facilities getting destroyed. So for example, well, that's my own opinion, for example, the Basher, 8.5, it won't survive. No, I mean, I'm telling you the truth, unless it's built.
It is one of our newer facilities.
I don't, I don't know how it's built, yeah, but 8.5, you will see buildings destroyed. So what happens is you use open spaces.
Absolutely. Actually, that's a very good point.
That's why I'm telling you for that field.
In this city's emergency plan, they call, what they call PSA's, Public Service Areas, where it would be open space gathering places where they could set up tents and maybe if they, depending on how widespread the disaster is, they might bring up a shower, portable showers on trailers and set up.
Yes, yeah.
Outdoors spaces, which is fine if it happens on a nice day. If it's in the middle of winter and rain and everything else, it's nice to have an indoor space too. But you're absolutely right on our city's disaster response. We envision having these PSAs, these public safety areas.
Okay, good, yeah. That's the only thing, because I, because I thought, you know, the, where the swimming pool is, I cannot pronounce the name anymore.
Jimonapool.
Yeah, Jimonapool. That is a big field that is open, you know?
It is a beautiful field, and there are showers nearby. It's also a school district property, so that would be.
Okay.
The agreements that the Red Cross would have with the school district.
Okay, that's good to know, yeah. Okay, so that was one of mine.
Yeah, and I would say the same, they probably, I don't know this for fact, but I would imagine they also have Benjamin Franklin and Thomas Polissey School.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because they also have large buildings and big fields.
Yes, yeah, okay. No, but this is, I mean, it's in an emergency, but as you said, if it's a total destroyed city, then mayors and everybody agrees this and this.
And the reality that some Daly City residents forget, the San Andreas Fault runs right through Daly City, out to the Pacific Ocean there at Muscle Rock. So, you know, the potential for disaster is surely there, and hopefully, none of us have to live through it, but that's, that's one of the reasons it's important to be prepared. And as far as the Department of Library and Recreation Services, so typically, when there's a disaster like that, all city, all public employees become disaster service workers. That's part of the California State Government Code. And we would all be assigned specific tasks in responder, you know, police and fire responders, public works, would be cleanup, water wastewater guys making sure that there's, there's water and sewage service. Typically, recreation people are moved into what they call the Care and Shelter Unit, and we will be scheduling right after summer ends with the Red Cross, a review of Care and Shelter, the do's and don'ts of running a successful shelter in the event of an emergency. We're talking about full-time employees in this case, but certainly in recreation, we have a lot of part-time folks. But we'll be training the full-time folks in Care and Shelter for emergency response.
So just a question, so this agreement, is it a renewal, or is, this is a new?
It's, they start off with a fresh agreement. I, I think the past renewal expired, and they're just doing it again. So one thing about the Red Cross, it's almost all volunteers. I think they have one staff person in the entire region. The turnover for volunteers tends to be a little bit greater than the paid workforce. So it may have, you know, the last person who did it has probably moved on to something else. The person we're working with now is a wonderful Daly City resident named Betty Fleming, who's been a volunteer with the Red Cross for quite a while. And Betty, if you're watching tonight, we miss you, though, I was hoping you'd be here. She, in fact, I should give her credit. Betty Fleming did the physical inventory of all three of the facilities, and she was out there with clipboards and calculators and measuring devices and making calculations on square footage and all that stuff. So I thank her from the bottom of my heart, because, you know, I really appreciate the fact that there's a Daly City resident who cares enough about this stuff to volunteer with the Red Cross and, and do the heavy lifting, so to speak.
That's great. Any questions?
So this, as I was just covering, is this a renewal of?
It's a new agreement, but one very similar to agreements we've had in the past. And one, another, you know, just to touch on something that someone might be watching at home thinking, well, I'm gonna go sleep on the floor in the gym. There are, in fact, if you drive along Highway 1, there's, there are trailers scattered throughout San Mateo County that have supplies for the Red Cross, and they're jam-packed with things like cots and blankets and towels and emergency rations and such. So we wouldn't expect, hopefully, people would be sleeping on the floor of the gym, that hopefully, we'd get the trailers or the cots.
Okay.
And if you remember, I'm thinking back to Hurricane Katrina, I know that was a long time ago, but they had lots of people at the Superdome in New Orleans.
Yeah.
And they took over that whole complex, and it was full of cots and folks.
Thank you for bringing up that example, because I'm just trying to visualize, like, in a disaster, I recall that staff play a certain role, recreation staff play a certain role during a disaster, so I was just curious, what, what else is Red Cross's role during that time? So like, providing the equipment during the disasters and?
Absolutely. And the food preparation, and, and they would do a lot of logistics along with, so locally, the City Council would be the ones that would declare a local emergency.
Of course.
The City Manager becomes the, what is the title? God, I did this for so many years, I'm drawing a blank now. The head of the operations. And then, and it's, it's very similar to military structure. So you've got, like, a head of operations, a head of public works, you have search and rescue, you have building inspectors that would be coming out to determine if facilities were safe before they could be occupied. There's a, it's a pretty detailed response plan.
Right.
And, and hopefully, I mean, when we come to, if we come to that, it would be localized enough. California has an incredible mutual aid system, so we would expect, we would get lots of support from the southern part of the state if it was a localized event in Northern California. Likewise, we send teams down when there's been disasters in the southern, or actually in different parts of the state. And a lot of people think it's just the wildfires. We've sent building inspectors and streets paving experts up, and even, I've done some, I was trained to do disaster surveyors, reports that would, when you bring in federal funding through FEMA, you know, it's, it's an army that gets involved right in a locale where the disaster is.
And the good thing, I think, American Red Cross is international, so they also provide, because then El Salvador, for example, Red Cross brought people to, to rescue or to find people that were on their buildings and everything. So they bring their own people as well internationally, all the, how do you call it, topos, I don't know how they call it in English, but they brought their people to, to find people that were trapped in buildings, yeah, I remember that.
Smaller scale, we work with the Red Cross all the time. When there's a single-family, a house fire, oftentimes, residents are displaced, and in many cases, they literally don't have relatives nearby, and they have no place to go. We've housed people, short-term, most recently, at the Hillside Clubhouse when there was a house fire. But we've, I think we've also housed them at the Talia Center, another house fire. And I know when, when the big flood happened a few years ago, on Lucene over there by Hillside Park, a lot of the houses got flooded, and so until it was cleaned up, we had a lot of them over at the clubhouse. I believe that was at Talia Center, no, at the clubhouse. No, at the Talia Center, because the clubhouse was probably not accessible.
Do these can give opportunities for, for citizens to, I mean, I mean, I'm sorry, for people in Daly City to learn some training through American Red Cross? Because they have good, good trainings also inside.
They do, we definitely encourage Daly City residents especially to get involved with the Community Emergency Response Team training, it's C E R T cert training.
Yeah.
The Daly City, actually, the North County Fire Authority puts on classes. I believe the curriculum is 21 hours, and it covers a lot of things, but basically, the expectation, you've probably heard, if you've lived in California, you've heard that be prepared to be on your own, at least for the first 72 hours, because there just won't be enough help to go door to door. And with these Community Emergency Response Teams are kind of trained in all aspects of, of public safety, but really, to respond locally in their neighborhood, to, to be able to assess their neighborhoods, help those, you know, they have basic first aid, and they get trained in using fire extinguishers. They get, actually, when they graduate, they get a little backpack of emergency supplies too, and they almost become like a, a block captain for disaster response. So I, I don't, I have off the top of my head the dates for the training, but that is offered, and if you go to northcountyfireauthority.org, there's usually a list of what the upcoming classes are.
Yeah, I'm actually a member, so I did it a couple years back, but it was so helpful, like even, I mean, for me, I've always been really interested in disaster planning, but to, just the skill set alone, like, you end up really applying it not only to your neighborhood, but also to yourself and your family, and you can pass on the information to others in the community, so it's really good.
And I know 21 hours sounds like a lot of time, and to find that much time is kind of daunting for folks. They also offer like a mini, I think a two or three hour, they call it individual.
Yeah.
Response training, and it's really focused on, which you just mentioned, really taking, making sure you're prepared at home and your family's taken care of.
It's fun. Like, the 21 hours.
Like a two, I think, I believe that was about two hours.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
In fact, they've, they've done the trainings on weekends in this very building, so.
That's good to know.
So the action on this item would be to support and recommend that the City Council authorize the City Manager to enter into the facility use agreement with the Red Cross.
Okay.
So that's the motion.
Yeah.
If somebody wants to make it, I can't make it.
I mean, I definitely think it's important, so, but I'd like to call for a motion to move this, to move the facility use agreement forward to the City Council.
Well, I'd like to enter a motion to recommend to Daly City Council to authorize their agreement with the Red Cross as outlined, and so, that's it.
I second.
Great. Motion approved to move this forward to the City Council.
And that's it for the Director's Report at this meeting.
Great. Next up, Commissioners' Reports. Does anyone have a?
No, no. Hopefully, we could get it onto the agenda for the next.
Maybe you can give them kind of an overview of what to expect?
Yeah, for sure. So after the, this past summer, working with the flag football community in Daly City, I really feel like we have an opportunity this fall to bring the program back. So what I hope to do for the next meeting is to get it onto the agenda with perhaps, because like I said, I've been overseeing flag football programs for quite some time now, and I could come up with different drafts for you guys to see how this could possibly happen and reignite it in the fall. So that's pretty much my only update. I don't know if we need a motion or anything to put it onto the agenda, or?
That's a great question, Commissioner Ortiz. Now, historically, the way items make it, there's two, two paths to making it to the agenda. Some are staff-driven, like the Red Cross thing was something we thought was important to share with you. The other commissioner-driven ones generally go through the chair, and then the chair would determine, that's kind of one of the prerogatives of being a chair, the chair could either say thumbs up or thumbs down. So you'd typically make the request through the chair, and then the chair would say, please add this item, or she would say, no, don't add that.
For sure, and this would be the time to?
Yeah, and that would be a perfect time. And in the event that things come up between now and the next meeting, that you think, oh, we really need to have this on the agenda, it probably would be a good idea to let the chair know, and Denise and I know, just so we're all on the same page.
I understand.
But I think now's a perfect time.
Yeah, and, yeah, so Chair, I asked if there's any way we could put this on?
I don't think the chair is going to protest that.
Thumbs up.
No, I don't protest that.
Now, I'm not quite sure that the substance of the item is going to be from you. Maybe we need to talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, we could talk about it together, I would, I would, I mean, the more people, the better, because I'm sure that there's staff that's well-expertise in terms of the community itself, the facilities, the equipment that we have, as well as overall budgeting in the past. And if there's any way we could get more information on, on like prices of, like, like how much individuals paid for the program, and how the money was allocated into, into budgeting for programs year after year after year, that would be definitely helpful to, for the next meeting. But if, yeah, we can just make sure it's on the agenda, so we can, yeah, have it as a topic next week, or next month, it would be perfect.
But with a caveat, just so you all understand, the way Daly City does its budgeting, does a two-year budget cycle, that budget period goes from July 1 to June 30 of the following year. We just started fiscal year that is 2019, 2020, so we are locked into a budget that will go from now through June 30 of 2020, and there is no money allocated for flag football.
Great.
Okay. I just want to make sure we all understand, okay?
I feel like, I mean, we could, I totally believe in the spirit of volunteerism.
Okay, I do too.
And, and the community that's been building up for the last few months and the last year as well, I think there's possibilities in this, so I would definitely explore that.
Okay. I'd like to motion to add?
You can just direct. You can just direct us to put it over.
Okay, we'd like to add the flag football program onto the next agenda for August, August Great, any other reports?
Well, I was, just wanted to let you guys know, my kids are in the summer program, and they love it, so it's really good for me to see all the good things that, um?
Where are they?
In Geller. So they like it, they have fun, and I see the kids volunteering, and it's amazing how everything gets coordinated. And yeah, they went to the beach today, they had the field trip, they did come really happy. And I'm happy that the program is working, yeah.
I want to, I want to co-sign that as well, because I've been visiting the sites. I took a look at Westlake, their summer program, and their packed house, like, they're up in, in and out of the building is, is definitely very, really positive to see, as well as Geller. Like you mentioned, the volunteers there, they have a pretty strong crew, and, yeah.
Oh, yes, and I like the camaraderie, camaraderie.
Camaraderie.
Camaraderie, between the volunteers and even the kids, you know, they, they respect their volunteers. It's really nice, really nice, I like how it's working.
That's great.
That's good to hear. I was out there today, and I always think, the thing about both Geller and Westlake, you never know with the summer weather, it's gonna be, and those four kids, sometimes, they're out there shivering. I was talking to our Junior Giants Ambassador.
Yeah.
Before I came over here tonight, she was saying, last week, they actually got drizzled on, and the kids were all freaking out at Westlake Park during Junior Giants. That doesn't happen in L.A. That doesn't happen in Los Angeles in the summer. Daly City. Anyway, yeah, it's great that the kids are so resilient here, they don't care if it's cold and windy and foggy, you know? I can hear them laugh.
As long as they're outside doing something.
Yes.
They're not getting sunburned.
It's not too cold here, it's hot everywhere else, that's what it is.
Well, I'd like to add that earlier this month, there, there was that Independence Day celebration on July 3, and I was just impressed with the, the community that came out to support it, and it was kind of like a reminiscing day, where I ran into a couple of parents who, who approached me, saying, you don't remember me, but you coached my kid. And we're all working with our, our adult children now, who are doing their, their careers now, and we had a nice time to reflect on that. And, but it was nice to see the community come together for the July 3 Independence Day celebration, and kudos to all the staff that helped out with that. And on a second note, just going back to our last Commission meeting, I was just impressed with the Daly City Youth Commission's presentation by the two youngsters that presented to us, and I'm excited to see what comes out of it in terms of the, the youth getting involved with their decisions and how they would like to see Daly City progress with the youth going forward, and getting their thoughts, so.
They will definitely make another appearance here, after the school year gets going.
Right.
We'll invite them by, and they can share what they've been working on and discussing.
So a couple positive things that happened within the past couple months, so.
Yeah, and just to tag on to the July 3, we had over 300 paid, which is a long time ago. And there are a lot of people that, that paid for lunch.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people that just come, I'll use your word for the camaraderie, and the entertainment, and just to be around other people, so it was very well attended, it was good to see.
Yeah, got to see all of us for the first time.
Yes.
Want to breeze through these announcements, or you have?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, real quickly, and these are directly related to the program that Commissioner Flamenco was talking about, our Summer Youth Recreation Program. They're having their gym sleepover this coming Friday, July 26, and they will spend the whole night in the gym, starting at 6 o'clock, and they get fed, and they play games, and usually watch a movie, and it's, my kids have done it, and I don't think there's a lot of sleep, they have fun. And maybe gym sleepover is the wrong term, it's, spend the night in the gym. And then their Summer Carnival is Wednesday, July 31. I know Commissioner Pastore's been to that before, that'll be Pacelli Gym also. And their summer luau, oh, that is not, the summer luau is with the swim program. That is Saturday, August 3. And then we return to the Ceremony Center for Final Health and Safety Fair, August 17. There's a couple of things that aren't on here, including National Night Out, I'm sure will be out there, and the date's escaping me, but that's coming up in August at Ceremony as well. It's coordinated mostly by the Daly City Police Department, but there's a lot of community service organizations out there. And looking way ahead, haunted pools coming up in October too, we'll talk about that at our next meeting.
Great, thank you, there's so many.
Summer's almost over.
Oh, yeah, it's moving really quickly. Are there any public comments? Go ahead.
Not to impress anything, but just go ahead and speak.
Unless the microphone is on?
Should be on, all right.
Yeah, it should be.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jerome McCaspack, a member and former president of the Keystone Program of the Bay Shore Community. So over the years, I've worked with Nate, and I'm here to talk about the flag football program within the Bay Shore Athletics and how it has played a huge role in the lives of many kids in my community. And so the flag football program has helped kids stay off the streets, stay active, and most importantly, it has helped build relationships that have gone on to last even to this day. And so I've joined this flag football program in the third grade, that was my first year. And so I know a lot of people even that, that I've known to this day because of this flag football program. And so I'm speaking here in front of you all today to vouch for a return of that flag football program within the Daly City community. And so I believe that with the return of this program, the Parks and Recreation Services of Daly City will make a huge impact on keeping children safe, of course, healthy, and most importantly, help create memories that can go on to last a lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's really great to, to hear that the program has been around for that long and has impacted you, so. That's really great.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Colonel, appreciate it.
Thank you, we're looking forward to learning more about the program on our next meeting.
For sure.
At this time, if there are no other reports, I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
You have a motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second? This meeting is now adjourned to Tuesday, August 27 at 7:00 P.M. Thank you.